Good evening. Welcome to the City Council meeting for Wednesday, April 21st, 2021. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast live via East Hampton Media on Charter Channel 193 and livestreamed on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. We thank Executive Director Jen Ramsey and her fabulous team for bringing these meetings to you. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathered remotely during the COVID-19 pandemic, under an executive order by Governor Baker on March 12th, 2020, allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the City Council and of the public to remain on mute until recognized by the chair. Also, for members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara.
Peg Coniff?
Here.
Salem Derby? Erica Flood? Here. Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Kozinski? Tom Peak? Dan Rist?
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Here.
Owen Zerrit?
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum. Let's now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the republic.
The Constitution.
Divisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Could I take a motion to approve the minutes of April 7th?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes of April 7th. They have been amended to change the title of the minutes. It had April 17th. They've been amended to change it to April 7th, and I think there was a typo. So there will be, the published minutes will have those changes. And we'll take a vote.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem, Erica Flood?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP, JP or Tom Peak?
Here.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Yes.
Okay, minutes are approved. It is now time for public speak. For those of you who would like to participate in public speak on any topic other than what is in the public hearings tonight, please remember that we on the City Council can only listen, we cannot respond in any way. We ask you to remain respectful and direct your comments only to the City Council. If you would like to react, or if you would like to react, if you would like to speak, please select raise hand under reactions options. Please remain on mute and keep your camera turned off until called on. Before commenting, please state your name for the record and your address or your precinct. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. We do have a public hearing at 6:15, so public speak will be suspended and then resumed after the public hearings are over. I know, let's see, Kay Collins had her hand up, so, Kay, go ahead.
Good evening, councilors. I am speaking, Kay Collins, she/her pronouns, speaking on behalf of AKINE, I'm at Carol Lav at East Hampton. I just wanted to let everybody know about an event, an educational event that we're putting on, on the 29th of this month at 7:00 PM. As we all know, the verdict came down in the case of George Floyd's murder this week, which is a step toward accountability, but there is still a lot of flaws in the system of policing in this country. And I know that we have been having a lot of conversations about, and other communities have been having a lot of conversations about divesting funds from the police department and reallocating them to peer-led, community-based models of support. And I think that a lot of people have misunderstandings or confusion about what that actually means or looks like. So we have an event that is free and open to the public called Peer-Led 101. It is possible, and that's going to be facilitated by Celeste Clerk of the Wildflower Alliance. And panelists will include Isabella Garcia of Estoyaki and Sean Donovan of the Wildflower Alliance in a panel discussion with a Q&amp;A afterward. So if people want to know what a model of community-led or peer-led support actually looks like, it's an educational event for anyone to attend. It will be streamed live on our Facebook page, which is 01027, and E is not enough. And it will also be streaming on Zoom. If anybody would like to attend and does not have Facebook, they can email us at AKINE, that's A-K-I-N-E dot events with an S at gmail dot com. And again, that is April 29th, that's a Thursday, at 7:00 PM Eastern Time, and the event will go from 7:00 to 8:30, including Q&amp;A.
You're muted, Peg.
Hi, everybody. My name is Natalie Gomez. I'm in Precinct 2. I'm also going to be talking about the Derek Chauvin case, and I'm making a statement on behalf of AKINE. I will start with, obviously, AKINE stands for and E is not enough, which was formed through the collective experience of anguish and outrage after witnessing the public death of George Floyd. As a nation, as a collective, we became witnesses to a murder with the footage of George Floyd taking his final breath under Derek Chauvin's knee. We acknowledge today, well, yesterday's guilty verdict cannot diminish the collective trauma, neither will the guilty verdict eradicate fatal encounters over, over the overpoliced. The guilty verdict will not revive the life of George Floyd, who was a son, a brother, a father, and a loved one. AKINE stands in solidarity with George Floyd's family and the Black community. We speak his name, George Floyd, honoring the sanctity of his life, understanding the continued pain of his family, his loved ones, and his community. We reaffirm George Floyd's life mattered and that Black lives matter. May his life and death be a reckoning and unwavering acknowledgement that change needs to happen now. The verdict does not address the inherently violent practices embedded in our institution of policing, nor the root causes of overpolicing of BIPOC people and the ways that it intersects race and class. AKINE will continue to move from anguish to action, envisioning more humane systems and practices that serve our community. I yield my time.
Thank you, Natalie. Carolyn Cushing?
Hello, Carolyn Cushing, on Main Street, District 4. And I am speaking tonight, I have a little bit like a theme with a couple things under it of kind of waiting. I think like you all, I'm waiting for the budget, waiting to see the budget and then look at it. I have been emailing with some people on this call, so I thought it was coming today, but I guess not. And you have to be very proactive to figure out about the budget, when it's coming. I've been emailing, it's too bad, there's not like, the budget is coming at a certain time. We'll look at different parts in the Finance Committee, like some kind of schedule of that. So kind of waiting, waiting on the budget, I guess, like you all. The other thing I am waiting for, wearing my AKINE hat, is AKINE is waiting for, you know, direct responses to the communications, to the demands. Sometimes things happen and go somewhere else or to other people, but they don't come to us, even though we're the ones asking their questions. And the other thing I am waiting for, it's some acknowledgement, gratitude to the members of AKINE, not really me, you know, people in the BIPOC caucus who really did amazing outreach, reaching out to families, finding families that needed food, setting up the transportation system, which I, people were grateful for because we saw, you know, kind of, the first day the city was taking it over, the first week the city was taking it over, there was a big shout out for the fire department and the staff who set that up, and no mention of AKINE, who, you know, created the process. And not me, this is my neighbors, the people who are helping feed children in the community. So that's my waiting. And just while I'm talking, I think it's great that the library is getting ventilation and will be able to open up because the library is one of the most welcoming places in the city. So just sorry enough to say that again. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else. Is anyone else interested in public speak? Go ahead and put your hand up. Don't see any. Okay. We'll close public speak. And we have a couple of minutes, so, let's see, I want to see what we can get in before the public hearing begins. Dan, do you want to, is rent relief going to take a while?
It might. I don't think we want to do it before the public hearing. It'll probably take 10 or 15 minutes.
Okay.
Erica has her hand up.
Yes, Councilwoman Floyd.
I have a quick announcement of an event. Would that be appropriate?
Sure, do it.
I just want to welcome the members of the community over to Precinct 2. On Saturday, the Planning Department is co-hosting the opening of the latest Valley Bike Share Station, and that's at the corner of Parsons and Federal. It's going to be from 11:00 to 2:00. It's going to be an opportunity to take a free spin on these bikes and ask questions of the Valley Bike Share folks, and Planner Bag will be present as well. So I welcome everybody over. The rain date is set for Sunday, but again, if the weather holds, that'll be Saturday, the 24th, from 11:00 to 2:00. And I hope to see as many of you there as possible. It's exciting.
Great, thank you. Any other quick announcements that we can get in before the public hearing? Councilor Zerrit?
Thank you, President Coniff. A couple of quick community announcements, mostly. The 24th, let me just pull this up here, which is a couple days, is the 20th National Prescription Drug Takeback Day. There's information available about that in the East Hampton Police Department Facebook page. That is April 24th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. There'll be a drive-through collection at the Public Safety Complex for disposal of prescription drugs. Please don't flush those down the toilet. Also, next Thursday, April 29th, at Fort Hill Brewery, there'll be a fundraiser for the proposed skate park. As you all know, we approved a gift account for that recently, and there's a group in the city trying to bring a skate park to East Hampton, so that, I believe, is like 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. There's information online about that. A quick congratulation to our new East Hampton public poet laureates, Jason Montgomery and Alexander Woolner, and City's very proud of them. And then, so as you all know, May is typically a citywide cleanup event, and Liz Provo, who's done an amazing job with that in the past, has moved out of town. And there's a group in town that is working to coordinate this now. So we're going to make May Cleanup Month for the city. I'll be forwarding some more information about how to make that a reality and using an app like Literati. The actual cleanup day is going to be May 29th, and I'll be forwarding some more information about that. One thing I really, a vision that I really think would be great, and I'll send out some requests about that, is to have precinct councilors host cleanups in their precincts, and for at-large councilors who maybe live in that precinct to participate as well. We've had great coordination so far from a bunch of city departments, fire department, police department, DPW parks, the mayor's office, all been really helpful in pulling this together, and some volunteer sign-ups will be coming out soon, as well as information. And a project that I think is going to be near to dear to everybody in the city is a somewhat artistic visualization of the issue with litter of nip bottles. I know that's been an ongoing conversation throughout the city in various forums, certainly on social media. And so we've, in coordination with the DPW, we're going to set up a collection bin for nip bottles throughout the month of May over at 50 Payson, and asking residents to dispose of any of these bottles that they find there in these specific bins, so that at the end of the month, we can display how many we collect over the month, and really show, you know, in terms of visual effect, how many of these pieces of rubbish accumulate in our city, and maybe talk about ways to think about not throwing them in the street and taking action. So I'll be sending an email out to the council, asking for participation, volunteers in this precinct concept, as well as continuing to give you more information as it comes up. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Zerrit. I will take a motion to open the public hearings.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second to open the public hearings. Could I have a vote, please?
Boy, who's here? Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye. Motion of public hearings are now open. That's a risk.
We have before us a supplemental appropriation of CPA funds of $71,200 to provide for hepa filtration ventilation for the public library. This was an urgent matter and was fast-tracked by the CPA committee because without the ventilation, the library cannot open. It is a historic preservation request, so the CPA committee passed it on the condition that the local Historic Commission would tour the library with the contractor to make sure that this beautiful architecture, mostly evident on the first floor, was not impacted by this new ventilation system. I'm happy to say that the Historic Commission did, and I think it was in your packet, did approve of the contractor's work. On the first floor, there will only be vents in the floor itself, and on the lower floor in the basement, where there's a drop ceiling, and already a lot of infrastructure present, there's pipes, et cetera. There will be a round ventilation pipe. The main, the main heat exchanger, et cetera, and ventilation system, some of it on the outside of the building, will be adjacent to already existing utilities. So there was no impact on the infrastructure. Also, we asked, the CPA committee asked for what other quotes that the library got. They did get quotes from two contractors, which, to make a long story short, wanted to provide portable, noisy hepa filtration systems, which would take up space, and the word noise in a library is not compatible. So the library recommended that they go with the 71,000 contractor, which will provide a permanent ventilation system, which will not intrude on the architecture nor on the space, and would in the future allow for air conditioning, although that's not part of this particular recommendation. CPA committee unanimously approved this, and also Finance Committee approved it 3 to 0. Nora Blake is here, if councilors have any questions.
Councilors, do you have any questions of the library or the library board members? Going to get off easy now. Anyone from the public have any questions about the library? Okay.
Wow.
That's a risk.
You guys are getting off easy. I got the wrong one up, hold on. I'm reading from the agenda packet, just give me a second. I move that the City Council approve a supplemental appropriation request from the Community Preservation Act. The amount requested is $71,200 to be appropriated from the CPA Reserve for Historic Preservation, $71,200. To be appropriated to the Emily Williston Library Ventilation System, the amount is $71,200 for the purchase and installation of fresh air ventilation system to comply with the COVID-19 reopening requirements.
Second.
Motion in a second for the supplemental appropriation for the library ventilation system. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
I guess that's everybody.
Yep, motion passes. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Nora, you have a ventilation system. I guess, just to answer this one question, Nora, you expect this to be installed? I think it was in a couple of months, it'll be, will be open?
That's my hope, is sometime in July. He told me it would be a four-week lead time to get the material, and then five to six weeks for installation. Since we're butting up on May, it's probably mid-late July is when it will be done.
Okay, that'll be very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
The next supplemental appropriation is $30,078 to fund the migration of the city's current messaging system to the Google Workspace for Government. Finance Committee approved this 3 to 0. The biggest issue with this was security. We now have in-house physical servers, which have all of our information and data stored in-house. This is a security risk, and by migrating to Google, we will be able to put cloud security into our system, and all of our data will be stored in the cloud, and it's much safer. We will have new Google messaging and new Google meeting apps. We won't be Zooming anymore. This will all happen slowly over the summer, and I wanted to introduce to you, because some of you may not know her, and I'm going to do this because I have this thing about being respectful of people who have PhDs, Dr. Karen Kamahore, who is our new IT director, and she's here to speak a little bit on it and answer any of your questions. So Karen, she wants to be called Karen, but Dr. Kamahore, please answer some questions or speak to this, and relieve the anxiety of everybody moving to new messaging systems.
You're on mute, Karen. There you go. There you go.
So hello, everyone. We're very excited to have the opportunity to move to the Google Workspace for Government. It has the, not only the security, but the ability to provide all of our users with the tools they need. Currently, we have a hybrid system, where we have all of our users using Outlook, but some of our users having access to Word, you know, one file. So some of our files are on the clouds. Currently, some of them are on our servers. Nobody can find anything, nobody can share anything. So I think the users eventually are going to enjoy having a system that is reliable, that is easy to use. I know the transition is not going to be easy for everyone, but, you know, we have the infrastructure in place to make it as easy as possible. So we're going to start with a pilot, and I have some volunteers that are going to help us test the system, and then, and training and communications, and then we're going to go live at some point with the entire city users, and we'll continue to have trainings before and after. And of course, the help desk is going to be ready to answer questions and to attend to the issues that may come up. In cost, because we're talking about money and appropriation, we're paying now $12 per license for Microsoft. When we go to Google, we're going to pay $10 per user.
Thank you, Karen. Do any of the City Councilors have any questions for Karen? Councilor Zerrit?
Thank you, doctor. Will there be, will we need to do any training? And then also on our end, is there, can you speak to any functionality improvements that we might see if I'm the City Council?
So flexibility with calendars, with email, and sharing documents, you're going to have the opportunity, I don't know how often you work in documents together, to be writing and editing the same document live. So that is unique to Google, and you never lose a document. You can always go back to the history and the versions, and you can see exactly who added or deleted what, suggested a comment, and when. So I think that is going to be fantastic for the work you do and the work we do also in the city. We're going to have shared drives that are going to be owned by teams, so when somebody leaves, they don't leave with all their files, and then we struggle to find out who did what, they're going to stay with the organization. So we're going to have an institutional memory that is going to last and be preserved. Then we're also going to have chat, that at least for us, when we work, and we're always emailing or calling, and it's delayed in that conversation, in that communication, having chat is going to enable us to have a, you know, a live dialogue, very easy, very easily. And meetings, we're going to have Google Meet, that is part of, part of the package. Today, we're paying for Zoom, we're paying a nice price for Zoom, and Google is as powerful as Zoom. It records, and on top of that, it does live translations to, I think, 180 languages, which, you know.
That's huge.
So I think those are some of the things that Google bring. And then we're going to be in a platform that is, is modern, is looking forward, Google is constantly adding new tools and new services. So we're going to be ready to scale, and, you know, and use the technology that everybody out there is using.
Karen, what can we anticipate in terms of the beginning of the migration effort? Because my heart is having palpitations about moving from Zoom to Google in terms of Google Meet for these meetings, and I just want to know, you know, how long of a runway we'll have to learn?
Yes. So I prepared a little bit of, so, of the presentation to share with you, but we're, we're going to start at least a month of pilot and testing, where we're going to start testing all of our systems, is our data transferring, what is missing, how are the calendars looking, what happens with our teams? So we're going to have an entire month's testing. Then, when the day comes, we're going to have a go-live day, and that day, we're going to unplug Microsoft, and we're going to jump into Google. And it has to be a cut, because if not, people are going to continue going back and forth. But with Meet and Zoom, and I understand Zoom is fundamental for the work you do, we don't have a conflict. We can have both of them, and eventually move to Google Meet when, when we are comfortable with it.
Do you have a date in mind to start the process? Like, are you looking at the end of May, August? What are you thinking?
We have everything in place. We're just waiting for your approval to move forward.
Fair, fair.
As soon as that is done, it's going to be a month of testing, and then we go live.
Okay.
I have, I have one question.
Hands up. Dan, did you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question. Google Meet, it has always disturbed me that we can only have, on our console license, one meeting at a time. Do you think that we will be able to have multiple committee meetings at one time with Google Meet? That was just a thought I had the other day.
Yes, because we're getting the Google Workspace for Government, that is a little bit different than the personal one you have. So I think each one of us is going to have five terabytes of space to store data.
Five terabytes?
Yes, that is, is not allowed in the personal one. We are going to be able to create aliases on our own names. So we have one email, but it may look different for different people.
This is good, thank you.
Councilor Peak, and then Councilor Flood.
How, when it comes to, so that would be for our email as well, right? Yes. How is that going to work with emails that we received with our Outlook accounts? Are those going to get migrated over in a way? Because, you know, there's, there's often, like, if I, if I, if I'm now using Google to access that email, will it be easy for me to find emails that were sent to me prior to the migration?
Yes, absolutely. So that's, that's the tricky part, and that's why we're going to spend a month testing that all the data is migrating and is safe. So that's key. We have the responsibility to keep our data for at least seven years. So, you know, we're going to be very careful about that. And you're going to find that the search tools in Google are so much powerful than the ones that you have in Outlook. You can search by date, you can say You can search by date. You can say, search, just give me messages sent by this person with this subject during this time that has an attachment. So you're going to enjoy the features that come with Gmail. But yes, all the data is going to be saved and transferred. And, and that's why the pilot group is so important for us. And we recruited the mayor to be one of our guinea pigs. And we're very excited about that, because if somebody has a complicated email system and file sharing and different, that's a user that we want to make sure transfer.
Counselor Flood.
Just one quick question. Could you please help us understand the difference with the way that the public will interface with us using Google Meet? Will it be just as easy to log into these meetings as it is currently with Zoom?
Yes, absolutely. And I believe many of them will be actually even more familiar with Google Meet. But we're going to make sure that we have information available for the public. And, and also the translation is a little bit tricky. So we're going to have, it's an extension that you need to add to your browser. So you need to use Chrome and add an extension. So we're going to have to put information in place.
Fantastic. Just a quick follow-up. Would it, will we, will they be required to have a Gmail account to access Google Meet?
No, they will not.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Any other questions from the counselors? Any questions from the public? Okay, I'll take a motion, Dan.
Okay, I gotta call it up. I, I moved that the city council approved a supplemental appropriation. The request is for $30,078 to be transferred from free cash, $30,078, to be transferred to the Computer Miscellaneous Professional and Technical Account. $30,078 for the following purpose. For the, to fund the migration of the current city messaging system on premise Outlook Exchange 2016 to Google Workspace for Government. Migrating to Google Workspace aligns with the goal of building a transparent and modern IT infrastructure for the city's government. It lowers costs by reducing the overhead association with the premise service maintenance and storage. In addition to improving operational effectiveness, Google Workspace for Government provides multiple layers of security protocols, including multi-factor authentication, double encryption and replication of data. This migration to the cloud positions of the city in a scalable and elastic space for continued growth. Thank you.
Motion second for supplemental appropriation for Google Workspace for Government. Any further questions? Barbara.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Ms. Erin.
Yes.
Meg Coniff.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Karen.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Madam President, I move the public hearings be closed.
Thank you.
Motion is second to close the public hearings. Any discussion? Barbara.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Ms. Erin.
Yes.
Meg Coniff.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
Okay, the public hearings are now closed. Moving on to communications from elected officials, boards and committees. So under this, we have the initial status report from the Ordnance Review Committee. Counselor Rothschild, can you, in the form of a motion, summarize what you have there? And then we will move it to the ordinance committee so that they can take action or whatever they end up doing with some of the recommendations? Is that what your intent of providing this document to us was for, for us to explore making those changes? No?
No. At this point, we were just giving a progress report. I wasn't gonna.
So you want, you don't want the city council to take action on any of them yet?
I wasn't ready. I, I don't think we were ready for that yet. Because there might be a different priority once we're all the way through. But we just wanted you guys to know what we've been up to.
Okay.
So you feel this, can I, Counselor Peak and Counselor Gomez, is that what you're feeling too? Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. All right. So, just a second.
Just a reminder to the counselors, we're not going to do a Q and A on this, because it will ultimately go to ordinance. So this is just Counselor Rothschild providing us with an update. Counselor Peak.
Just some of the things that are in here while they are in the city ordinance might be more appropriate to go to public safety, for example. So they might not all go to ordinance, but there are items that, you know, I, I think I would certainly encourage counselors to consider drafting up a response to these points to ordinance or public safety or whatever committee was appropriate for that particular item.
So just, I want to be clear. So it is, so I feel like I'm getting two messages. So is it the expectation that out of this presentation, public safety and ordinance will look at those things and pull them into their committee? Or is this strictly a review of where we are and at some later date, we can have those conversations?
This is strictly a review of where we are at this point. But I think it would hurt to read it and just start, you know, letting your mind.
Oh, no, yeah, absolutely. I expect everyone should have already read it.
Yes, they should have already read it. And, and I also just think that we will, as, like I said, when we get through it all, there might be a different priority.
Sure.
Things we, so we don't want to just start.
Okay. I just want to make sure we understand that.
Counselor.
Counselor Peak.
Yeah, just to sort of circle back on that, like, I think the big, the deliverable that's coming out of this committee is a report to the council. And then council can, or individual counselors can decide to take these items and do something with them. Do so to, you know, I think that the members coming out of the committee might, I mean, I certainly will feel driven to act on some of these things. But, you know, ultimately, the, the report, like, what, what, what's, what's expected of this committee per our motion is a report. So this is the first part of that report.
Gotcha. Okay. Perfect. Sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Rothschild.
I'm just introducing our report and then Kay Collins, who's a member of our committee, and Tom Peak will also take it from, from there. But I just wanted to give a overview of how, what our process has been. Basically, we read a couple of chapters in advance and then we come with notes. And we kind of, it gets very into the minutia. We go through each thing and have a lot of questioning. We have some laughs, because there's some, you know, some outdated things in there that are humorous. But we, and we've, and we have a lot of good questions that often turn philosophical as well. We've had seven meetings so far. We've gone through the first eight chapters. We've had input from the Health Department, the City Clerk, the Personnel Director, the DPW Chief and the Police Department. And we're going to continue to reach out to departments. I can't tell you how helpful it is, because when we're reading through things, if there's not someone there who actually understands how it's implemented, if it's implemented, we, we don't know. So I'm going to keep encouraging department heads to read through the ordinances as requested. But I also reach out to them in advance when we're hitting a meeting that's going to hit their chapter. So our report today, like I said, is being presented by Kay Collins and Counselor Peak. So I'm going to let Kay, I'm inviting Kay to step up now to the podium.
Thank you so much, Lindsay. Counselor Rothschild. Dear honorable members of the city council, as of April 5th, 2021, the Ordnance Review Committee has reviewed the city ordinances up to Chapter Eight Personnel. Please find our findings. We're just presenting our findings and recommendations tonight. So we have, we have a couple of global recommendations. First of all, throughout the document, the committee is recommending a shift towards gender-neutral language. And this is specific, but it's also, it's also a global recommendation. The language is in Sections 4-3, the Wage Theft Ordinance, 11, Sections 4, 3, 1, Definitions, Item D, Veterans, states specifically that for a person to qualify as a veteran, that person must have been honorably discharged from the military. Between World War II and 2018, it's estimated that more than 100,000 gay members of the US military were discharged with dishonorable or less than honorable discharge status due to sexual orientation. And that's taken from Justitia's LGBTQ Legal Resource Center at justitia.com. Between the years of 1993, when the Don't Ask, Don't Tell law went into effect, and September 2011, when the statute was fully repealed, an estimated 13,000 service members received dishonorable or less than honorable discharges. Once Don't Ask, Don't Tell was repealed during President Obama's second administration, rather than automatically reversing these discharges, veterans were required to apply for a reversal and subsequent eligibility for veterans' benefits, including medical care pensions in the GI Bill, which provides funds for education. The ban on transgender service members serving openly was reinstated in 2019 and removed by President Biden by executive order at the start of his term in 2021. As of July of 2018, only 500 service members had gone through the appeals process, requiring veterans to hire lawyers. And 80% of those discharges were corrected. Legislation to automatically reverse those discharges has been proposed, but it has not yet been passed. The committee recommends that the city explore the legal viability of broadening the state definition for East Hampton. To include veterans whose dishonorable or less than honorable discharge status was a result of their sexuality, gender or gender expression. In addition to that, the city, the city should, the committee believes the city should examine ordinances which are infrequently enforced. There is a concern that such ordinances could be enforced in an unfair manner. If the city regularly chooses not to enforce an ordinance, then either removing it or more precisely defining that ordinance could be beneficial. Many fines and fees, especially those past decades ago, are very low, having not kept up the temptation. The committee recommends a global review of the fines and fees. Counselor Peak.
You're muted, Tom.
Sure am. There's a bunch of these, so I'm going to go through them a little bit quickly. But just to give you a sense of some of them, sort of smaller, more technical things that we found. There's confusing language in Section 1.4 that we just thought was just overly confusing. In Section 1.7, there's talks about, about the accessibility of the city ordinances. And we believe that that language should be updated to note that the city ordinances are available online. It also asks that, you know, the, the, the people who want to, like, a physical copy of the city ordinances should pay for it. And there was some thought on the committee that perhaps, you know, if somebody is in a position where they don't have access to internet, that, that should be something that we're willing to provide for free. In Section 2.1, this is actually one, I'm going to skip over this one, because we got some more info from, from Barb about why this is. There's just some, there's some confusing language, but apparently it has to do with MGL. We figured that out in the last couple of days. Let's see. So, oh yeah, this is one. In Chapter 2, Article 3, there are several boards and committees which require their members to be registered voters. And, you know, the committee noted that there are a number of reasons why an individual might not be able to register a vote, including their citizenship or immigration status. And some of those people might be valuable contributors to a border committee. So we're recommending that the registered voter be changed to resident. In, this is sort of a weird one. In Section 2.5.1, there's no term length given for members on the Council on Aging. This is out of sync with city policy, which, you know, when we do appoint new members to the Council on Aging, there is a term length, but it's not defined in the ordinance at all. So that's something we should probably clean up. So in 2.8.3, there's a, that's about naming buildings and cities and spaces in the city. There's just the words if appropriate, when talking about whether or not the, there should be a public hearing on this. The thought was that that's just too subjective and there should just always be a public hearing on that. 3-7.3, that's about helmet enforcement. We found that, in, in talks with the East Hampton Police Department, the procedures that are actually in place here are not what they actually do and are a bit harsher than what they actually do, which tends to be more about education and connecting people with resources than, you know, impounding kids bikes and fining them. So we just recommend that the city sort of formalize its current practices around that. Okay, so when we get to Section, or Chapter 5, it's kind of a doozy. It's, a lot of Chapter 5, which is, it has stuff about hawkers and junk dealers and stuff like that. It's not always entirely clear what, like, a lot of this is from the 40s. It's not totally clear what the, like, contemporary equivalent of that activity even is. The, we also spoke to our, our city clerk, Barb, and she said that in that same section on the garage sales part of it, the, basically, the current garage sale ordinance imposes an administrative burden on the clerk's office, which in terms of like the amount of hours that are put in is just not covered by the small fees that we charge. And the committee was recommending eliminating or reworking most of this section when it came down to it. The Police Department also weighed in and described two of those sections, Section 5.1 and 5.3, and all of Article 2 of Section 5 as being just obsolete. So that's a section that really, most of that, we think, can probably go. In, the Police Department noted that in Section 6.1, the language, as it currently stands, does not sufficiently, it isn't sufficiently detailed and sometimes it hasn't held up in court. So we'd want to, they actually provided some proposals for how to fix that. The Police Department noted that state law already covers Section 6.7, which is swimming in the nude. Although we have a number of things that sort of are there for both cases, but that was a point that they made and I wanted to relay it. So Section 6.8, which is about, sort of, I think, I believe that one's loitering after dark for youth. The Police Department stated that it was outdated and the committee expressed some concerns about how it would be enforced. So the committee is recommending striking that ordinance. The Police Department noted the Section 6.9, which is about youth discharging firearms inside the bounds of the city, is outdated and that matter is covered by legislation surrounding hunting licenses. So they're recommending striking that and just allowing the state regulations to stand there. The, when it came to, there's a list of non-criminal, criminal dispositions that is in the, in Section 6 of the ordinance. The police noted that the ordinance, the list of ordinances that are subject to non-criminal disposition is not exhaustive list and it should be updated. They also noted that right now, the city fine for violating the handicap parking ordinance is $50 as opposed to the state where you can get fined up to 500. So there's a thought about increasing that to just incentivize people taking up those parking spaces if they're not qualified for using them. And finally, in, oh yes, in 6.2.1, which is our recently passed plastics ban, there were a couple of committee members who had expressed some accessibility concerns when it comes to the use of plastic straws. I know that's something that we did discuss in committee. But the committee was just recommending that the Commission on Disability, which is doing a general sort of ordinance review of their own, I guess. But we just sort of flagged that as something where if they had a way that they thought that that could be improved, we'd want to hear it. But, yeah, so that is, that's where we are so far as of, you know, our meeting before the last one, which was Monday. So the, the stuff we did in the last meeting didn't make it onto this report. onto this report.
Great.
And I just wanted to add that we just did get a report from the Commission on Disability about the snow removal, so we thank them for sending that to us as well. It really helps the input that we get from different, different groups in the city.
Counsel Rothschild, did you reach out to Michael Slater for the veterans question? He's the Director of Veteran Services. I'm just asking, we don't have to go into a discussion.
No, but I will, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. That was very, that was very interesting, and I look forward to the full report when we can actually move it or not to committees as we need to. Okay, thank you very much. All right, we had a report on a proposed rent relief program guideline changes. Counsel Rist?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. As you know, we had a large discussion with Jana from Community Action and Jamie Webb and all of us, where we looked at the rather restrictive guidelines that may have been a factor in the fact that our rent relief program wasn't being utilized. I just want to say that when that was originally, the RFP, which set these guidelines up originally, was designed based on other communities, on advice from Community Action and the work they were doing. So what we've discovered is simply that we would like to make it more flexible and easier for people to be able to get rent relief in our city. We have discovered also that the guidelines I'm going to share with you now are also very similar, in fact, almost exact for Raft, the Raft program and the ERMA program from the state. So these aren't guidelines that are out there, way out of the box. They are similar to what those programs are doing. So Madam President, with your permission, I'm going to share the screen of the guidelines that the mayor put forward so that we can, I have to, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one. I'm gonna. My apologies, I gotta find it.
Technology, it's a beautiful thing.
Yeah.
Is Karen still here? No.
I don't know why. Just give me a moment, I apologize.
No worries. We have a captive audience, we're just waiting.
My God, oh, here we are. So what you see before you is what the mayor asked the CPA committee to consider. The mayor put this forward after it was developed by Jamie and myself and others and Jana. And the reason for that is, we as elected officials should be the ones approving these new guidelines. They are a major change from what we had before, and I think the council's going to be happy. So I'm just going to go through this as it is stated here. Remember, we had a problem with household income being considered. That has been, the CPA committee approved all these guidelines, by the way. Must have an income list, there is no household income, as the mayor put down here, treats roommates as if they are a family, regardless of whether income is shared. Unrelated individuals living together should not be treated as a household. So all of, that was a major change, which we liked. The original guideline had that there must, the renter had to be at least one month behind in rent. The new guideline does not need to be behind in rent. And the reason is, forcing otherwise eligible people to go into debt to qualify for this program is dehumanizing. We're keeping the $3,000 limit per rent. Verification guidelines also changed, which might speed up this program. We no longer require asset or bank account verification. This initial proposal to verify the applicants properly managing their money and did not have access to money that could be used to pay rent, forcing people to spend what little wealth they accumulated when they've done, don't have sufficient income perpetuates poverty and inequality. I thought that was very well said by the mayor. And we no longer need asset or bank verification. There's no change in subsidized housing guidelines. And all of these changes are retroactive to the start of the program. And what that means, I believe Jana indicated that there might be a few people who were disqualified before, and they are now going to be qualified, so they're going to get a call if we approve these. One of our committee members, there was some thought in the CPA of what risk is there for this program, someone gaming the system? And Greg Rolland, one of our members, made a very good comment. He said, "This risk is minimal. It is very unlikely that this is going to happen in our city, and we need, we need to get this to be a lot easier for people to apply for." And I believe this will speed up the process a lot. I noticed that Jana is here tonight, and she might answer a question of whether this will speed up the process. But more importantly, this will allow applicants to be easier to be approved for this. Counselors, I am going to ask that we approve this in this meeting in one session, because we've already discussed this at length, and this needs to get going right away. The planning department will have to write a new contract with Community Action, so I'm going to ask that, that you do not object, and I'll read a motion when we're done with questions. Counsel Rothschild.
Yep.
Sorry.
I don't, I don't have a question, I just have a comment, that I just really enjoyed and appreciated this process, how it was brought forward, and concerns were expressed by council members here and community members in terms of barriers to eligibility. And then it was taken, and those were taken into real, people really listened, those were taken into consideration. Everyone had the same goal in mind, that we help people in need in our city. It went back, it was reworked, the leadership of the mayor, and really pointing out things that dehumanize people, and bringing it back, and Counsel Rist, bringing it back and forth, and everywhere you're shepherding this. So I just, I just thought this was a really good example of collaboration and a process, and I just wanted to say that, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Flood?
Likewise, I just want to commend everybody involved for a great job and the hard work that went into addressing these issues that were voiced, and I want to thank you all for getting that hard work done to support the members of our community who need it the most. This is incredible.
Anything else before we take a motion? Okay, Counsel Rist?
Okay, I'll read a motion. I move that the city council approve a new program guidelines to the rent relief program as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, and to instruct the planning department to draft a new contract with Community Action of Pioneer Valley to that end.
Second. Motion second, to update the guidelines to the rent relief program. Any further conversation? Barbara?
Just wanted to make one final comment. This is necessary because the CPA regulation requires any change in the guidelines and that we have for any appropriation to be reapproved by the CPA and by the city council. So that's why this had to go through these, this process.
Thank you. Barbara? Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Craig Coniff?
Yes.
Erica Flood?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Was that it, Counsel Rist? Any other correspondence? Anything else, Counsel Rist, from your perspective, that you'd like to speak to? And I'll move on to mayor communication.
No, I do not have anything else, Madam President.
Mayor Communication, Mayor LaChapelle? I saw you a minute ago. There you are.
Erica Flood had her hand up maybe before that?
I had one more brief announcement, if it was an appropriate time.
If that's all right, Mayor?
No problem.
Go ahead.
Just one more brief announcement, really exciting, also related to the skate park. Beginning April 29th, there's going to be a bottle and can drive that's been organized in collaboration, Mary Ann's Dance and More, which is a local woman-owned and operated business, and The Can Man, which is a veteran-owned and operated business. Anybody who's willing to participate can simply bring your clean bottles and cans to The Can Man. He's going to keep a tally of all the donations between April 29th and May 5th, and then the proceeds are going to be donated to the skate park fund. So as you're cleaning up the city, please save those bottles and cans and bring them on over to The Can Man. Those guys are awesome over there. It's really mesmerizing to watch what they do. They count faster than anybody I've ever seen. And I just want to give a big shout out to Mary Ann's Dance and More and The Can Man for pulling this together really quickly. It was actually Mary Ann's son, who had the idea to put this fundraiser together on his way to school one day. So just a great, very exciting collaborative approach to bring our community together.
Great. Thank you, Counsel Flood. Okay, Mayor LaChapelle?
That, that's wonderful. I would put that out, I know it's not a conversation, but I would wonder on cleanup day, is there a way too for bottles and cans to be just brought to the 50-Pacin parking lot, right, and then brought over to The Can Man? So just a thought. On the agenda, Williston provides us a letter every year of economic direct and indirect economic impact they have on the city. The letter is in the package. I did ask for some more detail than from even last year, as far as what impact they have on, on the city and who attends schools, the amount of taxes their employees pay, who comes into the city because of their children's center. There's, there's a lot of numbers and facts in that letter, so I encourage everybody to take a look at it. I am very grateful to Williston, who, starting last October, seems maybe even sooner, provided testing for our first responders and essential city employees. Every week, we're wrapping it up the end of this month, and they did so at about $100 cheaper than what we could have gotten through the state, because they had a direct agreement with the Broad. So that was, it was fabulous. And they're also helping us with storage of ammonia and actually purchasing the tanks for the city to store excess ammonia that comes out as a byproduct of fire department activity. I would also, there's been some confusion or whatnot around library budget, so Williston gave a gift directly to the library, it did not go through the city directly, and then Williston gave my office $10,000 around, for professional development, and we're using that around the mayor pledge, mayor pledge work, as well as discovery, the Discovery Weekend with Dr. Campbell, which I would just like to quickly mention, I know we have a big, you have a big agenda. Dr. Campbell, who did the Discovery Weekend in October, maybe, he has been assigned to the city and to Hoyo as our local rapid recovery consultant. So he's, he's back in the city picking up the work. He started also pulling together Blueprint East Hampton, but also pulling together a rapid recovery plan based on the, based on the economic principles of how to generate wealth over, starting with easy access to capital and building equity. So you will all hear about that in the near coming future. So the other is, I have a request for letter support on the municipal vulnerability project that we put together. There was a public hearing, actually an open-air public hearing over on the planning board, and then an actual go-and-see tour over on Cherry Street where the project is proposed. We have significant flooding sewer and water issues at the end of Cherry Street. The municipal vulnerability grant, this is an action plan to actually design and then build out to correct those issues. The MVP grants are extremely important. It's one of the easiest ways, while competitive, to take things off of the list of our stormwater management treatment plan. And Cherry Street has been, Cherry Street's right on the top of that, and has been for a while. And it will also allow us to do some design work for the next set of projects that will increase our resilience in the face of climate change-related slow and rapid destruction, whether that's a microburst or just a change in water flow due to less snow and more, more air. So I would ask for a letter of support from the council, which of course, we would be happy to provide some sample language for.
So, is that the kind of thing, Counsel Rist, I'm going to defer to you on this one.
I would like to recommend that we make this motion this evening, Madam Mayor, if that's okay with you. You provided us some language in the packet.
Yep.
I think we've discussed the Cherry Street issue already a lot, and if counselors don't object, it's a support for a grant, and we all like grants. So if nobody objects, I'd like to put this forward. I see Diana Rossini's here, if there's any questions before I read the motion.
Many counselors have any questions for Diane? I don't see any.
Could I add just a, Diane is way too modest. Diane, this one very interesting part of this grant is around environmental justice neighborhoods and further exploring those in East Hampton. Diane really picked up on, on this theme in, in her, in her occupation and in engineering, but also in the city, and how important that is, as we're looking at our water and sewer systems and groundwater. So kudos to Diane to not only bringing that topic into our public discussions and our planning inside of City Hall, but also linking it directly to an action grant. And this will surely be of the start of, I think, many more environmental justice-focused grants and actions.
Thank you.
Mayor, do you want this signed by the full council, I assume? If it's drafted up, I guess from your office to Barbara for all of us to sign?
You can all sign it, or the president can sign it on behalf of the council, whatever your pleasure is.
I'll leave that up to President Coniff.
Okay.
I'm going to make the motion then, if that's all right?
Please.
I'm making a motion based on what was put in our packet. I move that we sign, that the city council provide a letter of support of an MVP action grant application by the City of East Hampton that will fund construction of green infrastructure improvements on Cherry Street and restoration of failed stormwater outfall at the end of Cherry Street within the Brickyard Brook Conservation Area. The construction phase proposed under the FY22 grant builds on the work conducted through the city's FY21 MVP action grant and will address ongoing active climate hazards in the Cherry Street neighborhood. The project will also serve as an initial green infrastructure demonstration site for the city, the first implementation site to showcase on the ground the range of possibilities depicted in the broader citywide green infrastructure master plan that is currently being completed under the ongoing grant. This project responds to the priorities identified in the city's Community Action, I'm sorry, the city's Community Resilience Building Workshop as part of the city's previously completed state-funded MVP planning grant. Our key objective to this project is to promote long-term planning and resiliency measures in the community and that, that consider both existing and ongoing infrastructure needs and natural system solutions. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve a letter for the MVP action grant by the city council. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Craig Coniff?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations. So Barbara, you'll be sending the letter to, does it matter if it's the whole council or just me?
I can, I can do it to the whole council. I can, I can do it to the whole council. Doesn't matter.
Let's do that. Okay. Great. Anything else, Mayor?
Yes. Tonight, I, in your inboxes and will be on the website, I am submitting my proposed budget for fiscal year 2022. The budget detail that you have in your inbox now has been prepared for your review and setting of the public hearings on each part of the government. The full budget book, it's a little different this year, is still all electric, electronic. We're going to print some books out. Typically, we print the budget out for people to see at the library, at the council on aging, public safety. So we're, we're printing them out and, and trying to figure out a couple of different ways or places they can be in the community where people, if they want access to them, can, can get them. So we're, we're, we're thinking certainly there will be one at public safety, but working with maybe a, a school or another location like that that's easily accessible and people can flip through the budget book. It's long, but a lot of, lot of information, I think, to all the department heads. I expedited the budget process this year to hit this, my, the deadline by charter to get a, I'm sorry, by charter, a deadline as we put out in our budget process to deliver proposed budget by April. And I thank the department heads for doing that. I really kind of pushed them on it. It is a negative budget overall. The increases that you will see are almost exclusively collective bargaining related and/or expenses that we are compelled to do under, under law. I look forward to going over the budget section by section with the council finance committee and also the, the general public.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Anyone have any questions of the mayor? Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Madam President?
Yes.
Will the public hearings for finance be set later in the agenda tonight?
You'll hear them in a moment.
All right.
We're seconds away.
Just wanted to get the ad straight. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope that, Mayor, you saw my last email. I moved them. I'll, I'll share the screen.
Yep. We're going to, we're going to go right into that now, Council Rist. So we'll move on to committee reports and we'll start with finance, Council Rist.
Yes, I'm going to share the screen so people can see the budget hearings that the mayor has put forward. Madam Mayor, if it's okay, I did change May 20th to May 24th. Do you have any, are you okay with that?
I am fine with that.
I didn't hear back.
Nope, that, that's fine.
So these are the dates that Barbara, you can, if there is anything in the mayor's package on the website that shows dates, these should be the ones that are put in. I assume the finance committee members have no problem with these dates as you see them on the screen, Omar and Peg.
Correct.
And as you see, each of the department heads, I assume Madam Mayor will be contacted to show up for these meetings. The mayor has provided a breakdown of the budget categories in each one of these budget hearings, and this is excellent. So as, as we did last year, we will go over the budget line by line. So if you have any questions about that, we'll begin in May. I have another item to talk to you about, and that is-
Excuse me, Council Rist?
Mm-hmm.
Could I just ask you to read those five dates and which departments will be impacted on those dates?
Let me bring it back up then.
And Dan, are these all at five o'clock?
I would like that because there probably going to be two hours. Unless there's an objection from the finance committee, I'd like to make all, all our meetings are five o'clock.
That's fine.
So May 12th, Public Works, Enterprise, Culture and Recreation. May 13th, Public Safety, Human Services. May 17th, Education, Debt and Interest, Unclassified Insurances, et cetera. May 24th, Revenue, Government and CPA. And May 26th, as we did last year, that's a normal meeting time. We will vote on each of the categories.
Thank you.
Okay. So Madam President, the next item is the fiscal. We did have a good report at our last meeting from Jen Galan, our treasurer. She provided us, and I believe in your packet, you'll see all of the COVID CARES Act funding and and I want to give you the totals that she gave us. I can call up, I have available to you all of those CARES Act spreadsheets if you have questions, councilors, but here's the basics. We received $1,409,537 in CARES grant monies. All of that has been received. To date, we've expended $1,92,552, which leaves a balance of $316,985, which has to be expended by the end of the year. FEMA doesn't grant us money. I misunderstood that. This acts as a reimbursable grant based on eligible expenses. CARES Act expenses that are FEMA re, I'm sorry, that's a mistake. FEMA reimbursable, CARES, no, I'm sorry. This is correct. The CARES expenses that are FEMA reimbursable are $1,137,800. That money was spent out of the general fund, and Jen, just correct me if I'm wrong. But all of that money came out of our regular accounts and we expect it to be reimbursed. The mayor's concerned, as I am, as you can see here highlighted, we have gotten nothing to date. So that's a lot of money we're hoping that will be paid back to us. Jen's here if you have any questions. Also, if anybody has a specific question on the spreadsheets, I can call them up for you, councilors.
Jen, are you, are you here?
Yeah, she's right there.
I know. I just want her to put her camera on.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Do any of the councilors have any questions on the CARES and FEMA update? Any questions around the finances or Jen, do you want to provide any context around what Council Rist has indicated?
Well, he, I don't know if you saw my thumbs up, but yes, the way that it was summarized was correct. And as far as FEMA, the way that FEMA reimbursement goes is, and this is like an interesting process with FEMA. If you do them in piecemeal, you're supposed to get the reimbursements fair, like faster because they're considered small projects versus large projects, which require less, still requires the same amount of reporting documentation, but in slightly less detail. So I was advised by our MEMA rep to, to do it, you know, a little at a time, which I'm hoping means we'll start getting some in a little at a time. So, you know, that's mainly we're just tracking it and we've had to, you know, we have to adhere to what the FEMA eligible expenses are. So as we've gone through this process, any POs and expenses, you know, are not only signed by the normal department heads, the mayor, but also myself to kind of verify that it is a qualified expense. You know, until they decide that they're going to change it.
Is the money, Jen, that we are owed, is there a high confidence that a significant portion of it will make its way into our bank account?
Okay, so the best answer I can give you for that is I'm confident that the money that we're owed has been spent on FEMA eligible expenses. So, I mean, we're at mercy, but I feel that, you know, unless, you know, they may take a little while, but I don't see any reason why it wouldn't be approved.
Okay, thank you. Council Peak?
I don't know if you know the answer to this, but I suspect you do. Do you have, like, are, are other, are other communities in the area having the same issue? This isn't like an East Hampton specific thing. It's just they haven't gotten around to doing this?
No, FEMA, the problem that, that I keep running into is in order to get the reimbursement from FEMA, you have to do, you have to put it on their portal. And you also upload documents to their portal, but if you upload them for one section, you have to upload that same document for another section in order for them to realize that you're, you know, you're using that document for both, I guess is the best way to explain it. So we've gone back and forth a little bit with, you know, okay, well, we need this information. And then I have to redirect them to, okay, well, that information is covered here. So I'm confident that probably, let's see, we're in April. I mean, I'm hoping by the end of this fiscal year, maybe, to get at least like the first of the dispersments. But I do, I mean, you know, it's been my experience that unfortunately, I think we have some FEMA projects that had been opened a long time ago and we're not fully funded on them yet. Go ahead.
And if there's, say that they drop the ball and it takes us longer than we expect to receive these reimbursements, what, what's like the actual consequence of that? Is this something that we can kind of float for a while or have budgetary consequences if they don't get around to doing something about this?
We shouldn't because even though as we've gone through this, it's been, you know, we've had to pay upfront, obviously. The GL accounts are set up similar to any revolving accounts. So, you know, it'll kind of come in as it comes and, and wash out what's, what's done. And I can't speak to, you know, what the auditor will do at the end of this fiscal year, but my recommendation would be that we move all of the FEMA expenses that need to be in the FEMA revolving account into there so that there isn't that impact on, on the general fund.
Thank you.
Can't speak for the mayor, but I believe I could say, Mayor, please correct me if I'm wrong, but you're cautious about the budget primarily because FEMA isn't as reliable as we'd like. Is that a correct statement, Mayor Lesip?
That is a very correct statement, and I am extremely worried, more so than by lack of local receipts and taxes collected, than I am that our cash flow is going to flow negative if we don't start getting FEMA reimbursements back in. Not to mention it will inhibit our ability to do our matches to very important infrastructure grants as well as programs to help small businesses as, and childcare, rent and mortgage relief that we can match once the state money. We still have FEMA reimbursement technically out since the microburst in 2011. And, and the last response I got to from FEMA was that anything related to COVID-19 direct supplies or, or hours worked going back to October 2020 will be 100% FEMA reimbursed, not just 75%. And my response was it doesn't really matter because we don't, we, we have zero back. So I'm worried that that expansion or of, of reimburseables to 100% will further gum up the works of us getting our initial reimbursements. I mean, our stuff is, when we call our, our liaisons to MEMA and FEMA, you can see East Hamptons. We're in there. You can see we've asked for the money. But I, I don't have a timeline of when we get it and we're in the, we're, yeah. To be outside of a gateway city, it's, it's, it just goes slower. Our need is smaller.
Isn't government wonderful? If there's, is that all the, on this, any other questions for Jen or the mayor or anything on the grant funding? I want to thank the mayor and our treasurer for giving us these spreadsheets. It's very transparent on how money was spent. We bought a lot of PPE. We helped with some of the school-related infrastructure IT. We hired a North Hampton nurse. There's a lot of items in there which are really informative as to how this pandemic has affected us and how the city used the money. So I'm very, very happy and thank you very much, Madam Mayor and Jen, for giving us this. On the 28th, I'm going to continue with the finance report, Madam President. On the 28th, we will be meeting to do new business. And we have a meeting with Mayor Goldstein of the, of the school committee to discuss the same kind of report from the schools. We hope to get that information. I would like to now read and make a motion for new business. I need to find it first. I apologize, I had it. This is for us, the city council. I'd like to make for a first reading an interdepartmental transfer. Demont requested $1,000 to be transferred from the reserve fund, $1,000 to be transferred to the city council clerical account, $75, the city council advertising account, $925,000, $925 to provide funding for the city council legal advertising for the rest of the fiscal year. Also to provide clerical coverage for the second council meeting in June if needed. I move that we send this interdepartmental transfer request to the finance committee and also set a public hearing for our next meeting for the same item. Second.
Motion is second for interdepartmental transfer of $1,000. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Just to, just to clarify, that also was a public hearing being set for the next meeting, Barbara.
Yep.
That concludes, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Rist. Public safety, Council Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. We scheduled the meeting for April 26th at 6:00 PM. So we're going to start discussing the report from the mayor's press group. And I hope you guys tell everybody and please show up. That concludes.
What time is that? 6 o'clock, did you say?
6:00 PM, yep.
Okay, thank you. Appointments, Council Rothschild?
So we had two new mayoral appointments. Kate DeSilva and Scott Redman, Kate DeSilva to the Commission on Disability. She, Kate moved to our community in June of this year and wanted to get involved in our community. She saw Angelique, who we all met, Baker, posted something online on Facebook about needing another member and Kate saw it and thought it was a great match for her. So that was like great outreach on Angelique's point, part. She works, she has extensive background working with people, supporting adults with developmental disabilities. She's very passionate about this work and she's very dedicated to making sure public spaces are accessible for everyone. And she's also like expert in programming and policy, so we're really excited that she wants to join this commission. Scott Redman is a, lives in East Hampton. He's a local Realtor. He was, Peter Davies had reached out to him and suggested that he would be a good fit for the, for the Board of Assessors. And he'd been wanting to work on a committee and board, had applied for others, but there weren't actually vacancies for the ones he applied. So this, he was looking, he was happy to have this match. So they're both just residents that want to be involved and have good skills that match the committees that they're joining, so committees and boards. So I would like to move to confirm the following two mayoral appointments. Kate DeSilva to the Commission on Disability with a term expiration 12/31/2022. And Scott Redman to the Board of Assessors with a term expiration 12/31/2022.
Motion is second for two mayoral appointments. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. I also have new business, right? I'm going to make a motion. I shared, for the benefit of the public, I shared a, a, an addition that the county, the appointments committee is suggesting be made to Rule 11H. Rule 11H pertains to the confirmation or rejection of mayoral appointments to all multi-member boards and committees. We wanted to, our mission was to- Uh, we wanted to, our mission was to look at it and figure out a way if we could make the vetting process more transparent and more consistent. So anyone coming through would have a consistent experience. Um, in our discussions, a lot came up that we didn't want to make it too rigid, that we should be able to ask questions that were pertinent to the role, pertinent to the, um, person. So.
Lindsay, I'm sorry, can you just make the motion and we'll have the conversation? When it goes into rules, we can have that conversation.
Okay, I was just trying to give a review for, of the letter for the public, anyway.
You can read the letter if you want.
I don't really want to, but maybe I'll just read the last paragraph.
There you go.
Um, okay, do I do it now or after I make the motion?
Just make the motion and then say.
Okay, I make the motion to move our proposed addition to Rule 11H to the Rules Committee.
Second. Oh, sorry.
Okay, motion and second. Lindsay, any further discussion on this?
That's me, no?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Um, we believe this process, this addition will create transparency and consistency, provide the candidate with an understanding of the process, allow the freedom to ask questions of the candidates within defined outline and provide the Appointments Committee with the information needed to make a decision.
Perfect, thank you. We have a motion and a second to move this particular amendment to Rule 11H to the Rules Committee. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Motion passes. Anything else, Counselor Rothschild?
Thus concludes. We don't have another meeting scheduled, but there's no appointees. And oh, since this got moved to to rules, when do we move this agenda item off our agenda? Can we do that now or do we do that in our committee?
Uh, I would wait.
Just wait in case it gets kicked back to us or something?
Yeah.
I'll just leave it there. Okay, so thus concludes.
Thank you. Uh, ordinance, I believe Counselor Zaret, you're going to give the ordinance report?
Yes, thank you, President Coniff. Uh, Counselor Jeremy couldn't attend tonight's meeting. Uh, we, we last met as a, uh, committee on April 13th. That was last Tuesday. We met in a joint public hearing with the Planning Board. Uh, the topic of discussion was the proposed language amendments for cannabis delivery and couriers. Um, this was, uh, continued. We had a very good discussion and that will be discussed again on May 11th. Additionally, in conjunction with that meeting, we will begin, um, a joint public hearing process regarding Counselor Peak's recommendations for, um, uh, changing our language around how we, uh, uh, allow ADUs in the city. And Counselor Peak, are we, is that meeting also going to entail the discussion of the, um, the multifamily units or or not? I don't remember.
That was the preference of Jeff Bag was to have the two move together. Now, whether we'll get, have time for all of those in that particular meetings, I don't know. But his preference was for us to move them both, uh, at the same time for, uh, just workflow within, uh, his department. So that would be what I would recommend.
Okay, so the, um, the cannabis business is is continuation. I would like to make a motion at this time to set a joint public hearing with the Planning Board.
Yeah, Owen. So how how it works now is that you need to bring forward those two things that Tom did. You need to bring it to the council and then it gets referred back to your committee and to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board sets the joint public hearing.
So, okay.
You have to, you have, the council has to vote to give it to the Ordinance Committee again and on to the Planning Board because the Planning Board doesn't have it at this point. And I also don't have any, um, updated versions of that, which I will need to be able to send it to them.
Barbara, how much notice do you need for that?
Well, I, like I said at the last meeting, I really would rather have those things done before you're going to, you know, send it on to the Planning Board.
Understood, but so what's what's the required, what's the, uh, time requirement for that? Is it a week, two weeks?
Well, there's, there's no requirement, but I mean, I really can't send it to the Planning Board until I get what you, what, what you're sending to them.
Okay, so we have.
Then there's a 65-day clock that starts as soon as it gets to the Planning Board for them to set the beginning of the public hearing.
President Coniff, Counselor Peak has his hands raised.
Oh, okay, Counselor Peak. Well, I'm, I'm not sure what we're talking about that we need to have a conversation, but go ahead.
The thing I was going to bring up is that, uh, I can send, uh, the current drafts. There might be, we were supposed to meet, uh, two weeks ago and there was a technical snafu that prevented us from doing so. Uh, there, so there's some very small adjustments we might need to make, but I can send you the drafts as they currently exist. And those are substantially what will be discussed at that hearing. And I would be happy to send, to to also forward along any changes we might make between then and now, which again, I would say will be very minor. This wasn't supposed to be an issue and it became an issue because a meeting didn't get scheduled. It was supposed to be scheduled.
Okay, I just need a document that is what you're proposing at the current time so I can send it to the Planning Board and they can start the the process.
Okay, I'll send that to you tonight.
Oh.
But then now the council has to vote to to do it, to to send it to Planning Board and Ordinance.
So Barb, do we do that tonight or do they have to first bring it back to us?
President Coniff, Vice President Rist does this.
I, I know, I was asking a question of our clerk. Hang on. Barbara?
I think as long as Tom can get me, you know, the current draft as it is right now and you're, you know, you feel like that's what you want to send to the Planning Board, then tonight you can vote right now. The, the council can vote to send it, you know, keep it in ordinance and send it on to planning.
Okay, Counselor Rist?
Can I just ask the Ordinance Committee, because I would prefer to know what I'm voting on, that this be sent to the, in the next packet for the next meeting. However, I'd be willing to do the motion as Barbara just mentioned, if there's an urgency to this. So will the Ordinance Committee inform me whether we can wait till the next packet and we have the proper language that you're developing for all of us to see? Somebody, Owen?
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I have some connectivity issues. Uh, we're meeting again the 4th and then we have a meeting, uh, so can we submit this, uh, to the packet for the 5th?
Well, not if you meet on the 4th.
Well, I I understand that, but we could submit our current edits, which are essentially final for both of the.
Sure.
Can we submit them for the next deadline?
Sure. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, you're not in a hurry to get this done tonight.
No, I apologize for, uh, the, uh, lapse in protocol. I wasn't, I think this is the first time we're, we're just starting this new process.
I would.
Go ahead, Counselor Peak.
Um, I think that the only urgency is just that it takes some time to get it. So if we can't even get the hearing scheduled toward, till the 5th, then can we even hold?
Well, and and you, you're not setting the hearing, the Planning Board's setting the hearing. It it gets to them and they're the ones who schedule it.
I think they already agreed to set the hearing.
Yeah, we spoke with them last week and they understand this is coming. I have no problem doing this whole process on the 5th of May, provided that's not going to prevent it from being heard on the 11th. And that's just where I'm not exactly clear because.
So they have to, um, Jeff has to advertise that in the paper, I believe, twice in the two weeks ahead of time. So, I mean, he won't even technic, the Planning Board technically won't have it until you you vote to send it to them. So, I mean, I, I mean, I, I think if you, if you were looking at the 11th, you you better vote it tonight.
I would conclude, I would also agree to that. I just, in the future, if it'd be possible to have this, and I know it's because you don't have your meeting. So I'm, I'm not upset. I just, uh, I would be happy to support a motion to send it to planning. I didn't know about the May 11th date, so you should do that, Owen. That's fine with me.
I'll make a motion at this time to send our current draft of the, um, of the multifamily with affordable units by plan approval and, uh, the replace, the amendment to Section 8.5 to allow ADUs with a building permit, a special permit to the Planning Board for review and for a special, uh, joint public hearing, sorry, on the 11th.
Check it.
Motion is second to move two items to the Planning Board in advance of a public hearing. Any further conversation? Barbara?
We'll start. Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
And send that to me tonight, Tom. Okay.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Um, as I think we've adequately covered, our next meeting is May 4th, uh, which also happens to be Star Wars Day. Uh, may the 4th be with you.
And what time is that meeting, Counselor Zaret?
Oh, thank you, 6:00 PM.
Okay.
And, uh, again, the continuation of the cannabis delivery and courier amendments is set for May 11th in joint public hearing with the Planning Board. And, um, we also discussed at the last meeting, uh, we did have a, we did have a couple discussions. Although the, the, the Ordinance Committee voted favorably, uh, 3-0 for the solar installation requirements on new construction, there were some unforeseen, um, and, uh, questions brought up by the Planning Board, as well as some local businesses, um, and some, some issues we didn't think of. And so we voted at our last meeting, uh, as a committee to recommend to remove that item without prejudice, to take a deeper dive on this topic. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to remove the solar installation requirement on certain new construction, uh, to be removed without prejudice.
Do I hear it second?
Second.
Motion is second to remove without prejudice the solar installation requirement item from the ordinance agenda. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist? Dan Rist?
Aye.
Okay, Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
And Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Based on, based on our discussion with the Planning Board last time, we anticipate a public hearing will be set for the first meeting in June for cannabis, but we'll, uh, we have another, uh, uh, meeting in May to to notify you about that. And thus concludes for ordinance.
Thank you, Counselor Zaret. Counselor Zaret, property.
Oh, hi. Um, so we don't have any active, we don't have any old business on property, but there are a few items, uh, for new business. Um, and so, uh, a couple things I'd like to move. So first motion is a motion to move to the property bit, uh, Property Committee, new business, uh, to, the proposal is to relocate jointly owned pole number T.54 slash E.54 to a point on the easterly side of Park Street, approximately 135 feet southerly from Central Island South Street for the purposes of accommodating a school project. That's a motion.
Can you do all three at the same time, Counselor Zaret?
Sure. Second item is, uh, in the form of a motion, a request to place one jointly owned pole, uh, numbered T.45 and a half slash E.555M on the southeastern side of Main Street at a point approximately 185 feet northeasterly from the Central Island South Street. This will provide midspan support for the existing pole line and ongoing utility services. And, uh, in the form of a motion, uh, allow, uh, a gas easement forever sourced in association with a new school project.
Taken.
Motion is second to, uh, discuss three pole location changes. Uh, any further discussion?
Uh, wait a clarification.
Okay.
It's, it's, um, President, it's, um, two pole locations and a.
And an easement. Yeah, sorry, thank you. Go ahead, Barbara.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist? All right, I see his.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Um, at this time, I would also like to set a, a public hearing for all of the, those three above items for our next meeting, which is.
Okay.
I, I don't think the easement needs a public hearing, but.
Okay, it's just a public motions. Okay, so I, I'm going to retract that motion. Uh, and I'd like to, uh, enter a new motion, uh, to set a public hearing for the two, uh, for the two pole requests, uh, for May 5th at 6:15 PM.
Anyone with a second?
Taken.
Motion and a second to set a public hearing for two pole location changes on May 5th. Any further discussion? Barbara?
I'm losing track who's, who's up. Um, well, we'll do Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And we have a meeting set for May 3rd at 5:30 PM, um, on Zoom.
Okay.
And thus, I'm just, sorry, I just want to double check. That thus concludes.
It was an adventurous couple of committee reports. Um, rules and government relations, Counselor Peak.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, we haven't met since last time. Uh, we should probably meet pretty soon, especially with the new, uh, item. But at this point, I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Counselor Peak. Uh, we have some ad hoc committees. So, uh, is there any updates for ranked choice voting, Counselor?
There is. Um, we sent our draft ordinance to the Solicitor, uh, for review. So, uh, who knows how long that'll take, but there's something out there getting looked at that, uh, will eventually find its way to this council.
Thank you. Um, I can report on the senior tax workoff, uh, that we have, uh, more or less handed off the, the building of the process to the Council on Aging there. The Board on the Council on Aging is working to stand up, uh, the process. We are still working collaboratively with the Senior Tax Workoff Committee, but, uh, largely now they're moving into a marketing and, uh, advertising, if you will, phase, as well as developing the job, uh, requirements and the job descriptions for, um, several departments within the city who have shown great interest and are already building job descriptions for help in their departments. So we're off to a good start. We're still aligning to our pilot, which is probably closer to the end of the summer. But if things pick up, we will absolutely change that timeline. Um, but things are going well. Ordnance Review Committee, I think we, we kind of covered that, Counselor Rothschild. Is there anything, are you having another meeting?
We are having another meeting. It's Monday, May 3rd. Is that a Monday?
What time?
6:30.
Uh, okay, we may have a conflict with, uh, Counselor Zaret, but we'll figure out a way to get you a Zoom ID for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And the Auditor Selection Committee, do we have anything to report there, Counselor Rothschild?
We just had a report that we met on Tuesday. Um, we went out of executive session and we will have a recommendation for the full council for our next meeting.
Great, thank you.
So thus.
All right, we've done new business, old business, other business. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Check it.
Motion is second to adjourn. Barbara?
Uh, Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Erica Flood?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
We did this before 8 o'clock. Let's just remember these dates.
Yay.
Bye, guys.
Hey Peg, I sent you the, uh, times for the Finance Committee. You got them, right? So you can set the Zoom meetings. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.